Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was your Siam out there. Oh, they're hot again.
Yeah.[883.11]
Allison Jeff and Jackie have smoked a cigarette. All right, good evening and welcome to the November eleventh meeting of the Florissant City Council. I would like to ask our boy scouts, please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you so much, gentlemen. All right. Please have the roll call of our members. Get your mic on.
Siam. Harris.
Here.
Meganelli.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shildroth.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Carson.
Present. All right, before we go on to our agenda items, first I want to have a moment of silence for our Florissant Valley Fire Protection District firefighter and paramedic Timothy Clancy. So if everyone can please bow your heads. Okay. Mr. Clancy passed away on November the seventh, a few days ago, and I know that's, there may be a council member or two that might have something that they would like to say. So I'll start with Councilman Egan.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a police officer, we have a often friendly rival with firefighters. I do want to tell one Tim Clancy story, however, we had a very unique encounter. In 2010, I was working as a police officer and I sustained a gunshot wound in the line of duty. And my partner took me to DePaul Hospital to be treated and we could not get in the doors of the hospital. Tim Clancy and his partner were coming out after making an ambulance run at two o'clock in the morning. And Tim and his partner picked me up and carried me in and threw me on a gurney and pushed me down to the treating room where their doctors were able to work on me. And so that encounter will always live with me in my life and my family's lives. And we wish Godspeed and we hope that, and know that Tim Clancy is in heaven. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Egan. Councilwoman Pagano.
We're more friends. He actually was a nephew of one of my dear friends. And we would joke, you know, around a lot. I just want to say my sincere sympathy goes to Stephanie and the children and all of his family and his mother. He was a very funny man. We had many great conversations, so he will be dearly missed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Pagano. All right, so the next thing, item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections, additions to the meeting minutes of October twenty eighth of 2024? All right, hearing none, Councilman Siam moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Councilman Harris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda for three minutes. This is not a question and answer period. If you would like to speak to a council member or the mayor, please stay until after the meeting is over. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, please wait and speak when the public hearing is announced. We have a few cards coming, so. Start with Antoinette Boyer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Please state your name again and your address.
My name is Antoinette Boyer. My address is thirty-one twenty-five Parker Road, Florissant, Missouri, six three oh three-three.
Okay, you have three minutes to say whatever you want to the council.
I need help. I am in distress. I explained to you all that I was a double lung transplant patient. My home is riddled and I'm not getting enough coverage as far as being able to get some assistance to get everything out of my home. I am in really distress. I had to go to the transplant center because I've been feeling sick. They're afraid of my lungs. I can't have that debris in my home contaminate my lungs. And yeah, I keep saying we MSD doing this and we gonna do that. It's time to buy us out. Six times, I can't handle it. I have nowhere else to go. I'm living at my daughter's house. I need help and not to call out people, but I'm tired. I work very hard for what I have and I need some help. Insurance companies don't want to cover these houses. Six times, how many times it take to get to the center of the Tizzie Road? The problem is just excessive. And y'all are the council people. It's y'all represent us, okay? Help me, I can't keep going through this. It's time to buy us out up there. The whole neighborhood up there is just riddled. And I don't have nowhere to go. I'm a widow twenty-one years. I try to hold all this down by myself and I can't. I don't have nobody to go to, to get help. I'm ready for you all to step in as my representatives. Talk to MSD. MSD, they're twenty-eight hundred ain't doing nothing, three thousand ain't doing nothing. It's time for them to do something more. Buy these people out. I can't handle it. I went in my house, I had to be rushed back down there to the Cygnus Cancer Center. I can't do this. And I'm just asking y'all as representatives to help us out. No more keep repairing, don't keep tacking the band-aid. Fix the problem. That's all I'm gonna try to do. Please, can y'all help us? I don't want to go through this no more. And I, and my lungs, y'all know how much my lungs cost? A million dollars. I was fortunate enough to get on the transplant list and get surgery for twenty-eight and a half hours. I can't keep going through this. I can't do it no more. So please help us out. Can y'all try to get MSD to buy us out? No more infrastructure, trying to fix pipes, I'm paying additional money for this and that. I'm tired. It's depleting my income. I can't do it. So can y'all please, as representatives, help the community that's going through this? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your statement. Okay, next we have, I believe it's Danielle Johnson.
Yes.
Can you please state your name and your address?
Hi, my name is Danielle Johnson. I'm at thirty-two twenty-five Parker Road. I'm the first house on Parker Road. And I have been with her, which I'm gonna piggyback, six floods. I cannot turn this one into my insurance company. I'd have been through almost three of them and I get dropped every time. So anything I'm recovering out of my basement is coming out of my pocket. I can't afford this anymore. MSD is not doing anything for us. My problem also with this is that I would like for you guys to push harder, to push them, to help us. Because we're not getting nowhere. If I can get a fine for having Christmas lights up in February and March and not taking them down and nothing was wrong with that, get in trouble or someone comes to my house where my grass not getting cut? Everybody wants our community beautiful. We can't keep our community beautiful if they can't take care of us because we're putting too much money into our house. I can't afford to keep going back and forth. I didn't got pneumonia. My husband was hospitalized for almost a week and a half because he got sick from this flood. Six times, water didn't came up my steps. Sewer, it smells bad, MSD. I didn't call them three times, they have not yet been to my home. Not yet. And I'm just a few houses down. Every time she floods, I flood. Every time I flood, she floods. It's ridiculous. You guys, we got to get some help. I mean, and then for us to be, I didn't speak at the Civic Center, but for us to sit there and hear how there's funds, there's grants, we're getting new restaurants, we're getting hotels. You guys, help us, please. We are Florissant. I'm sitting right there in the middle of Florissant. Help us. I can understand you want to get a restaurant, you want to make Florissant this and that. We need you guys' help. We can't do it. We got people getting sick, her especially. My other neighbor Nancy that got sick at the place yesterday at the Civic Center. We can't do this. She lost her whole business. Hot water heaters, how many, what they're giving us ain't even gonna cover a hot water heater. I got refrigerators, hot water heaters, furnaces, food loss. We can't do this, you guys. I don't know what it is, but somehow MSD has to be pushed before they are sued and that's in progress right now. That's all I got to say. Please help us.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, of which there are none. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item is bills for second reading. We have bill number one zero zero one one. Councilman Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill?
In order to appropriating community development block grant, I can't say that a lot louder, CDBG funds for the 2024 fiscal year for the city of Florissant.
Councilman O'Donnell moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Meganelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill for the third time?
In order to appropriating the community development block grant, CDBG funds for the 2024 fiscal year for the city of Florissant.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Siam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Meganelli.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Pagano. Carson.
Yes. Bill number one zero zero one one passes and becomes ordinance number nine zero one one. All right, next we have bill number one zero zero one two. Councilman Siam moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B five ordinance number sixty-one thirty-four as amended to allow for a carryout bakery located at twenty-three ten North Highway sixty-seven.
All right, Councilman Siam moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Shildroth. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill?
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B five ordinance number sixty-one thirty-four as amended to allow for a carryout bakery located at twenty-three ten North Highway sixty-seven.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Siam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Meganelli.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes. All right, bill number one zero zero one two passes and becomes ordinance number nine zero one two. Okay, next we have bill number one zero zero one three. Councilman O'Donnell moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill for the second time?
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit for Quick Lons LLC to allow for construction parking in a shared office space in a B three extensive business district for the property located at eleven forty-five North Lafayette Street.
Okay, Councilman O'Donnell moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Caputa. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a special, sorry, special use permit for Quick Lons LLC to allow for construction parking in a shared office space in a B three extensive business district for the property located at eleven forty-five North Lafayette Street.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? All right, hearing none. Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Siam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Meganelli.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes. Bill number one zero zero one three passes and becomes ordinance number nine zero one three. All right, next we have bill number one zero zero one four. Councilman Egan moves for a second reading. I'm sorry. We have bill number one zero zero one five. Councilman Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? Okay, Councilman Egan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is yet another painting of the brick ordinance. And I would just caution the council that we need to be consistent with our votes on this. I know that we turned one down a few weeks ago that was apparently allowable to be painted. I think it's important to know that planning and zoning turned this particular one down. I just hope, and I want to know going forward, that we need to be consistent in the way we proceed with how we allow businesses that want to paint. I understand that branding is a big, a big issue. But I also know that in this case, the brick up there is gorgeous. That helps with the dichotomy in my brain and that the color that they're going to paint it is probably not my favorite. But so I think we just need to be consistent. We can't let one person paint and not another person. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Councilman Egan. Councilman Caputa.
Thank you, Ms. President. My thoughts on this also, Mr. Egan, is I know that it's in the ordinance that once they paint it, they move, they shut down, they have to sandblast or try to get that paint off that brick. Once you start sandblasting off, you're breaking down the integrity of that brick and you'll never, it'll never be the same as the rest of that structure there. So I, I will be, I will not be supporting this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Caputa. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this business is in a, in a business district and it's not, the painting of brick is not allowed according to ordinance in the business district. But I also want to know, as I did in the last meeting, that this, this building is part of a larger center. And the brick on this building is attached to the other businesses with the same brick. And I just want to point out that if, if this business is painted, it'll be right up next against the other businesses in the same center. And I think that that's something that should be considered as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Harris. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please, have you read the bill for a second time? I don't think we got there.
No, we need all the papers for.
Okay, all right. All right, we moved for the second reading. That was, Councilman Egan moved for the second reading, seconded by Councilman Caputa. We've had our discussion, so all in favor? All those opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance to amend B five ordinance number six five 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 as amended to allow for painted brick located eighty-one eighty-two North Lindbergh for undefeated Tribe Florissant LLC DBA Crunch Fitness.
All right, Councilman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Caputa. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you read the bill for a third time?
Mm-hmm. Ordinance to amend B five ordinance number six five 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 as amended to allow for painted brick located eighty-one eighty-two North Lindbergh for undefeated Tribe Florissant LLC DBA Crunch Fitness.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Siam.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Meganelli.
No.
Egan.
No.
Caputa.
No.
Shildroth.
No.
O'Donnell.
No.
Pagano.
No.
Carson.
No. Bill number one zero zero one five fails. Next we have bill number one zero zero one six. Councilman Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by Councilman Meganelli. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you read the bill for a second time?
Ordinance to amend B five ordinance number six five 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 as amended to allow for a wall sign over one hundred feet for the property located eighty-one eighty-two North Lindbergh Crunch Fitness.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilwoman Pagano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you please read the bill for a third time?
Ordinance to amend B five ordinance number six five 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 as amended to allow for a wall sign over one hundred feet for the property located eighty-one eighty-two North Lindbergh Crunch Fitness.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Siam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Meganelli.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes. Bill number one zero zero one six passes and becomes ordinance number nine zero one four. Okay, next we have substitute bill number one zero zero one seven. Councilman Carson moves to accept the substitute bill, seconded by Councilman Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Carson moves for a second reading, that's seconded by Councilman Harris. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you please read the substitute bill for a second time?
Ordinance to approve the annual budget for the city of Florissant for fiscal year beginning December one, two thousand twenty-four and ending on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, Councilman Carson moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Shildroth. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you read the bill for a third time?
Ordinance to approve the annual budget for the city of Florissant for the fiscal year beginning December one, two thousand twenty-four and ending on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council for the final vote?
Yes, sir. Siam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Meganelli.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes. Bill number one zero zero one seven passes and becomes ordinance number nine zero one five. All right, the next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under new business is board appointments. Let's go to Mayor Lowry for board appointments.
Thank you. I wish to reappoint Dave Klasby from Ward Eight and Greg Kyle from Ward Four to the Traffic Commission.
Moved to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Caputa, seconded by Councilman Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, those appointments are made. Okay, next on the item on the agenda is bills for first reading. We have bill number one zero zero one eight. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-four six as amended, which established the wage range and pay plan for the unclassified employees and effective date clause.
Bill number one zero zero one nine. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty-eight forty-two and establishing a new compensation plan for part-time employees of the city of Florissant and containing an effective date clause.
Bill number one zero zero two zero. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty-nine sixty, establishing a grade and step schedule for uniformed employees positions within the city of Florissant and enacting in lieu and thereof a new ordinance containing an effective date clause.
Bill number one zero zero two one. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance amending chapter one twenty-five Personnel, Article Two, Classification of Positions, Section one twenty-five zero six five, Wage Increase and Schedule by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it.
Bill number one zero zero two two. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty-seven forty-six, establishing a grade and step schedule for full-time classified positions in the city of Florissant and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance containing an effective date clause.
Bill number one zero zero two three. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Title Two, Chapter two four five Parks and Recreation of Florissant City Code, Section two four five one eight zero, Fees for Use, to adjust fees for use for various park facilities.
And last but not least, bill number one zero zero two four. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chapter two four five Parks and Recreation, Article eleven, Old Florissant Golf Club, Subsection two four five six one zero fees and charges, to adjust fees for the golf course facility.
All right, thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Let's start with Councilman Shildroth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to wish all our veterans a happy Veterans Day. And I would like to thank Mr. Caputa and Mr. Carson for their service to our country. I would like to thank the administration for honoring the late Andy Quinones by placing a bench and a bush in front of City Hall last week. Andy was a valuable member of the Florissant staff and he's missed every day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Shildroth. Next, let's go to Councilman Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Shildroth, thank you. First off, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day. Yesterday, had a very successful Veterans Day parade. It was well attended and Veteran of the Year was Ron Smith, actually from Ward Four, from my ward. So it's, it's an honor to have the Veteran of the Year from the ward. Also, he was also a Marine, which was, yesterday was a Marine Corps birthday. So I would like to wish all the Marines out there, happy birthday and simplify. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Caputa. Next, Councilman Egan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Since we've last gathered, we had a, an election in our town here. And I wanted to thank, congratulate all those who threw their hat in the ring to run for the various offices and the winners, especially our state rep Gretchen Bangert, who is our now county councilwoman-elect. So congrats to all the winners and those who didn't do so well, at least you gave it a shot.
All right, thank you, Councilman Egan. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to mention a couple of public meetings coming up. One is November thirteenth, so that is in two days, on Wednesday at JFK Community Center. Seven PM, it's a public meeting for the Parks Comprehensive Master Plan. This is to provide public input to the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. So residents will have the opportunity to voice their ideas towards each park design. At this particular meeting, the parks that are going to be discussed are Sunset, Malanphy, Coke, St. Ferdinand, Champlain Florville, Loretto Manor, Spanish Land Grant Davidson, Coldwater Commons, Bellman and Blackfoot. So I encourage everybody to come out and give input on that. Also, there is a public meeting the next week on Thursday, November twenty-first. It's an open house from four to seven. This is also at JFK Community Center from four to seven PM. And this is to, to review the proposed resurfacing project on Malanphy Road. So there's some, some progress on that and want to get the public input and awareness on what's going on there. Everybody have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilman Harris. Next, let's go to Councilwoman Pagano.
Yes, thank you. I would also like to thank all our veterans and those serving now for your brave. for your bravery, service, and sacrifice protecting our freedoms in this great country that we do live in. And also, Ward 5 and Ward 7, Councilman Shildroth, Shildroth and I are looking forward to seeing all of you at the Justice Center on November 21st. That is Thursday next week at 7:00 PM. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Pagano. I would like to just reiterate what everyone else has said about Veterans Day and our Veterans Day Parade and our activities that took place yesterday. Really proud of the VFW Hall and all of our veterans that are here in the city of Florissant and everybody who organizes that event. It's something that is, you know, truly heartfelt and truly a great event for people in the areas outside of Florissant to come and visit. We always do a very excellent job. Somehow, we've got a string of excellent weather, so I hope that continues. And then additionally, I want to say happy birthday to our Marines. We have one Marine here, Councilman Kaputa. Thank you so much for your service. He never forgets his big brother's birthday in the Navy, so I want to make sure, I want to make sure that I say something about the Marines. But you know, you know how brothers are. Now it's too late, sir. All right. Next, we have a message from our mayor.
So I just want to wish all of our veterans a happy Veterans Day, certainly Mr. Parson and Mr. Kaputa for their service to our country. We certainly appreciate it. And what, we did have a great event yesterday, and I appreciate everybody coming out and showing so much support for our veterans because they really have been a valuable piece of, for this country and us moving forward for our freedom. So we really do appreciate everybody coming out and supporting them. And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up is, once again, on November 28th, will be our kickoff for our Christmas season with Miracle on St. Francis Street, and that will be followed by our tree lighting ceremony right here at the, the, I'm sorry, the Civic Center, or City Hall, sorry. City Hall, I knew, got too many buildings right here at City Hall. So please check our website and attend that wonderful event. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor Lowry. The next meeting, the next regular meeting for the city council will be on Monday, November 25th at 7:00 PM. Councilman O'Donnell moves to adjourn the regular meeting, seconded by Councilwoman Pagano. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.